The Kerrville City Council is now in session for this workshop. Let me clarify something as we begin. Because of the increasing numbers of COVID-19 reported in our community by the Peterson Regional Medical Center, the decision was made really late in the week to return to social distancing. But also because of the number of notices that have gone out on public hearings and so forth, we felt like we could not change the location because we had said the location's here at City Hall. Standard safety protocols will be observed by all attending city council meetings. And while wearing of masks at council meetings is voluntary, we highly rate encourage it as a preventative health measure. We will observe six-foot distant seating with visitor seating being designated. Visitor overflow will be in the City Hall lobby or outside City Hall. Citizens who are not able to attend because of these restrictions can see the city council meetings on Spectrum, Channel 2, or by live streaming via the city's website, www.kerrvilltx.gov. At this time, we're going to begin with public comments. Do we have any public comments, Ms. Backlander?
No one has signed up, sir.
Okay, then we'll go right to the report from the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation. And Mr. Gil Salinas will make that for us. I'm gonna go and explain, Mr. Salinas is moving a little slowly because he has had major surgery on his knee.
Yeah, I thought about it. I didn't want to come here with sneakers, you know. Now I'm looking around. Yeah, so that's my unintentional grand entrance, so. So three things I learned from that. One is, therapy hurts a lot. I mean, I have total respect for that. The other one is you have to take it day by day, very, very slow. And now I'm forced to actually, I had no idea, but to walk up straight. I mean, those therapists, they're like, they're on you. So, so now I'm walking like this, so, okay. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for having me here. We usually do our end-of-year presentation in December, but due to my surgery, I was not gonna be here in person, so we're gonna be doing it today. So it'll be an end-of-year and moving into 2022.
Is it pixelated? Were it from these screens?
No, I think it's just me, so that's why I brought notes this time. All right, so, so I'm gonna start with the deliverables, breaking it into our different divisions within economic development. And so I'll start with public relations and then social media. We had at the state and national level, seven press releases that we issued. And that was for Gulf Avionics and the RBR announcement that we had almost a year ago. I think it was in February, March of last year. The Courage Entrepreneur Center, and then some awards that we got with the IEDC, and then also the SEDC, and then the Business Innovation Forum. We had thirty-nine pieces of coverage that resulted from those press releases, again, at the national level as we're tracking those. That equated to about one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand estimated coverage views. And from that, we started working on the social, our social media platforms, so we had four-hundred-and-fifty posts. And from that, we had eighty-eight thousand interactions from social media, which all in all is about forty-nine million online impressions and readerships from the online activity as well as our press releases that we issued. And again, you know, these are picked up by major publications and trade magazines throughout the U.S. As far as speaking engagements, usually these are designed for our national audience in addition to the speaking engagements that we do at the local level. We had six of those. One was at the International Economic Development Council, the Texas EDC as well. Then we had a couple with the Economic Development Leadership Summit. One was very specific to the aerospace sector growing in this area and how a rural community was able to attract some of those companies. And then the other one was in electric vehicles, both by land and by air. And they were asking about our opinion, what the future of that looked like. And every time we're doing these speaking engagements, that's, you know, Kerrville is front and center on a national stage. We had four events where we're pitching Kerrville. One was the Texas Brazil Chamber. That was obviously via Zoom. That was, that was about three-hundred entrepreneurs from Sao Paulo. So they were listening from, you know, different Texas communities as far as doing business in Texas. We also presented to a cluster of Japanese investors through the Tokyo Metropolitan Government and the Texas Office, Governor's Office partnership. And then we were one of fifty cities that were selected to speak. We had a virtual seat at the table with the U.S. Department of Secretary of Commerce, Mr. Dominic Graves, talking about the EDA funding that was coming out and in turn asking different communities what they would be using that money for. And again, we're one of fifty communities in the U.S. that were selected to do that. We had four interviews on national podcasts in addition to the local ones. One was the Consulta Connect, which is for site selectors. The other one was the Top Fifty Economic Developers of North America. And then the IEDC Ninety-Fifth Special Marketing Campaign edition, they included a couple of interviews for us. So business retention and expansion, in short, that's BRI. We had one-hundred-and-thirty-four interactions with local industry and companies. That does not mean that we talked to one-hundred-and-thirty-four companies. It just means that we had multiple conversations with some of our top twenty employers in the area, in addition to some of the small businesses and entrepreneurs. We helped, of those, we helped four local companies with state funding, so I'll get to that here in a bit. And then on the human capital side, we had three industry roundtable meetings and discussions. Again, that's where our top employers come in and start sharing information, data, and any trends that they're seeing. We had forty-one workforce engagements with local companies, and again, these are sometimes multiple. And then we authored two white papers on economic development. And I like to say that, you know, one of the true, one of the true responsibilities of an EDO is to be able to do research, gather data, provide some empirical data evidence to come up with any kind of trends that are happening at the local level. So we've authored two of those, so we usually do one or two a year. One was on the quality of place, as far as how we're seeing economic development transition from traditional to quality of place here in the area. And then the other one was on the workforce, which was the challenges that we've been seeing here as of the last few months. And then on the entrepreneurial side, we had a couple of webinars for local entrepreneurs, some of the Courage classes, and again, that's for our local businesses. It's just marketing, accounting, finance, business law. And then we had seven entrepreneurs that we interviewed through our Economic Dialogue Podcast.
Does anyone wanted to access those white papers? Where would, where would they go?
We have those, I know we have one of them on the website. I need to check to see if the other one's there. So we'll make sure that they're available on our website, and yeah, those are available for the public. On the corporate recruitment side, I like to say that this is where the rubber meets the pavement. I mean, this is what, you know, EDOs are tasked to do. And I will say that it was a little hard to follow the announcement of Kildare a year and a half ago, to follow that. I mean, that was, I mean, that's basically our Super Bowl, you know, for, you know, the next few years. However, the success of that project has really set us up nicely and opened doors for other activities that we're seeing, and I'll touch on that here in a bit. And my experience has been with working companies of this caliber, projects of this scope, size, and magnitude, that they'll just continue giving and giving to the community for the next five to ten years, if not more. And we're seeing that already. On the recruitment side, we had forty leads that were generated from the staff, internally, website, and then also some walk-ins. Then we had fifty-four that came in from the Office of the Governor, from their Economic Development Division. That was, that was a lot. Last year, we saw so many leads coming our way. And then we had the calls also, I mean, thirty-one calls from site selectors and consultants. And that was again a result of Kildare calling us up, myself and Teresa is like, you landed this project. You're a rural community, which I think, I'm like, on paper, we are, but if you come visit it, we're not, semi-rural. And they're like, talk to us, what, what's going on there? And then from that, we had seven prospects that we hosted, so those are prospective companies. Two were in the manufacturing side, two were in the aviation and avionics. One was in the entertainment, and two were hotel projects that came through our office. And when it comes to those, I mean, we hand those over to EA's team, and then we're in a support role for those. From those, we were able to close two deals, and there's a third that's pending. That was again Gulf Avionics and RBR Aviation, which was almost a year ago, I think it was about February last year. And that was fifty jobs from those two combined, about seventy thousand dollars in annual salaries. And over the next five years, their economic impact is upward of about thirty million dollars for the next ten years.
What, fifty jobs, seventy thousand annual salaries? What, what, what does that mean exactly?
That they'll be creating fifty jobs over the next five years.
But the seventy thousand, is that a per person or is that?
Per person, yes, yes, and average annual wages, wages per person for those fifty jobs. Right now, they're at about, I think they've got under, I don't think they have ten, they might have eight or nine employees. But again, they said over the next five years, we're gonna be ramping up, ramping up.
That thirty million in economic impact? How long? What, is that over the course of five years?
That's over the first five years. That's their impact, correct. And again, that's, that's, that's money that did not exist in Kerrville before that. Okay, so incentives, I mean, we're pretty familiar, you know, when we recruited Kildare, what it all took to be able to close that deal. As far as last year, there was nothing that was paid in incentives to, to projects that came through the EDC. As far as importing money, which is something that we've done the last three years, again, this is just leveraging the relationships that we have, both at the state and at the federal level. So we're able to get about one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars in workforce funds to all plastics manufacturing. And that was a company that we mentioned at our last end-of-year report. We said, to be determined, we're still working with All Plastics as far as the workforce training funds. So we're able to get one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, again, that's through the state. Our, we ourselves, we got about thirty-two thousand eight hundred through a PPP forgivable loan for the EDC for our operation. And then the other one, which is gonna be a announcement, a big announcement next week, there was a jet grant in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars that was awarded to Ingram ISD to help upscale the, the talent at their high schools, specifically for students that are going either into a trades operation or some kind of a stance field within Kerrville.
What does JET stand for?
That's a good question. I'm not too sure, but it's, it's along the lines of stamps.
Career and, career and technology oriented type of?
This one's very specific to welding, cybersecurity. Can't remember the other one, but those are the two.
Will it help them get certifications while they're in high school? Is that?
It's a process of getting certification, and then what they have to do is pair up with some employers. That way, they can start getting the specifications from the employer as to what they need, what they want, and get them ready. That way, when they graduate, it's a seamless transition. And part of it is that they guarantee that our students are staying in our community.
Jobs and education for Texans.
That sounds about right, yes. Okay, so pending programs, similar to what we did with All Plastics. We have something pending with Gulf Avionics, as well as James Avery, and then Project Water Bikers, which is fairly new project, but they're, they're looking for some funding, and it looks like they, they might be a fit for something that we found through our navigation of the state, state funding. Okay, so on the Business Innovation Forum, that was hosted in November, and I think most of you all were there. We had about two-hundred-and-forty-nine people that registered for that. It was a combination of in-person people, a lot that came in through Zoom, and then the other ones that requested to have the videos delivered to them. That's just the world that we live in today, very hybrid. And the goal of that forum was to spur economic opportunities and local business for some of our entrepreneurs. Some of the outcomes was, you know, there was a handful of job offers that were made to some of the attendees because we have quite a few students, both from the high schools as well as the community college and the university that attended. Gulf Avionics, they donated some tools, equipment, there were some internship opportunities. We had a couple of site selectors that came in, toured the city, provided some very meaningful feedback as to what we need to be working on. On the, we signed up some people for the center, the Courage Center. Funding opportunities, there were some funding opportunities made available to some of our filmmakers. That HBO Film Production was announced at the Innovation Forum. And then we started a collaboration with the San Antonio EDF, with their international office. So now we've got some activity and MOUs pending with both the Mexican and the Canadian entrepreneurial associations with our Courage Entrepreneur Center later in the year, and that came out of the center. But one of the bigger ones was again, the JET Grant and the P-Tech Opportunity. That came out of, you know, Ingram ISD being at the Innovation Forum, having those discussions, having somebody from Texas Workforce Commission, and then they just ran with that.
Hope you do that again. Your forum was, it was delightful.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I just remember being, just limping around, but yes, it was great. So it's, yeah, we're, we're looking at doing that again. Talking of which, that's on our schedule, doing the Second Annual Business Innovation Forum. Our Stakeholder Retreat is, is gonna be either end of February through, sometime through March. You all will be getting an invite, or we're pulling all of our stakeholders. Remember, I've got four, five different stakeholder groups. That's almost fifty people that we have to pull to see who's available on what date. And that's what we're gonna, that information and data from that retreat that we're gonna have, now we're gonna start working on our three-to-five-year strategic plan. The first one that we had was more for the roadmap that we're working with today. Brian Daniel, he's the chairman of the Texas Workforce Commission. So there's actually three Texas Workforce Commissioners, and you all have met Julian Alvarez, who came in here a couple of years ago and then last year, who was actually instrumental with the Kildare Project. He's one of three Texas Workforce Commissioners. Brian Daniel is the chairman of the three, so he'll be here next week. We're hosting him for a leadership luncheon on, on Thursday. He's also gonna be here to participate in an industry roundtable with our top twenty employers, the heads of those companies, coming in and just kinda sharing some of that information, hearing from him, what can be done, so on and so forth. But what's very important is that our local companies will now have access to him, not just on that date, but after that. So there's, there's a lot of importance in having him there at that meeting. And then he's also gonna be here for the announcement of that JET Grant for the, for Ingram ISD. So that's, that's gonna be pretty exciting. And then in May, we're gonna have Joe McGruder, who's the Director of Aviation, Aerospace, and Space for the State of Texas. He was appointed by the, by Governor Abbott. He's gonna be here in May for two, three things, and one of us to tour some of the, the Kildare Project. He was very, he helped us a lot with that project, look at some of the other companies that we have in the area, get a feel for what Kerrville industry is like. And then also, we're gonna be pairing him up with an event that we're gonna be having where we're calling it a signing event. We're not too sure what we're gonna call it, we're just saying signing event. Very similar to what you would see with college athletes that are going, you know, from high school to a college, and they pick a college, and they have this ceremonial event. We're gonna do that for our local kids that are looking to work with some of our local companies as it pertains to stamps. And so we're pairing industry with education, higher education, and he's gonna come in and facilitate some, that ceremony that we're gonna have with, you know, whether it's a dozen students or fifty students, we don't know yet. But we're working to pair them up and have that event, again, going back to addressing some of our workforce challenges and trying to gain some momentum and inspire some of our local kids as well. Okay, so in closing here, I think you all have heard me say in the past that, you know, it's about connecting the dots. That's what economic development is. It's, it's not rocket science. We come in and just kinda start connecting everything. Workforce, housing, quality of place, just as I mentioned, pairing local industry with education, higher education. You know, our Entrepreneurial Center is, is becoming very important and launching some of these careers, our state partnerships, the Innovation Forum, that's a huge part of our strategy now moving forward as we've seen how there's some very favorable outcomes for the area here. And then, Mayor, at our board meeting yesterday, you said it very well as far as some of the synergies that you're seeing with the development of our aerospace and aviation cluster that's really starting to, no pun intended, but take off. And then moving into 2022, we're now starting to see, you all will be a part of this as far as once we have our stakeholder groups together, you know, really defining what economic development is and how we're seeing it change in Kerrville, going from traditional economic development to more of a quality of place, which is you start working on the amenities that talent is looking for. In turn, talent is gonna be attracted to the area, and those forward-thinking companies, those knowledge-based firms, which are not the smokestack companies, are gonna be following that talent. So we're gonna be transitioning into that now. And, and for the most part, I've met with most of you all, especially when I first got here, and the community. You know, in my immersion tour of meeting more than two-hundred community leaders, just everybody on the board, was, was very clear that as far as economic development, we need to be systematic and strategic about how we grow our community, helping it, giving it just a little push as far as the organic growth, not a steroid growth, and bringing everything together, but continuing to keep the fabric of the Hill Country. So we continue doing that, moving in that direction, and that's gonna be a huge topic now moving into our retreat that we're gonna have here in the next month, maybe couple of months. So I will leave you with this. We, at the last, at the end of the year, we received some recognition. That was from the International Development Council, which is the trade association that oversees all of the EDOs in the, in the country. And we were recognized with a One Gold Award, which is really the first time that we've gotten one here, at least in recent history, for economic development efforts. And we had like three bronze awards. And then the one that I really liked, that really stood out, was Best in Class, and that was through the SEDC. And basically, that was for communities between fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, just having an overall very good program as far as return on investment for the community. So that was, that was actually last month that we received that one, which to me was a very nice Christmas present, in addition to getting a new knee, right? But a very good Christmas present for the organization as well as for the community.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Do you have questions for Mr. Salinas?
I don't, I'm, I'm.
I have a, I have a single question. Okay, I, I've read in the newspaper recently some criticisms of economic development. I've, my comment and then question, my comment is, what you said at the end was really interesting to me because of focus on quality of place to attract the kind of businesses that we want. So, question, when you get those kinds of criticisms, how do you speak to those? And if you have an elevator speech, what do you say to people that say we don't need economic development?
I haven't done that with the person that put that in the paper yet. But when that happens, usually I, I call them up immediately. And it's like, here's my name, here's my number, anything you need, you call me up. And fifty percent of the time, they will come in and they'll talk. And I'll hear them out, and then I'll present what it is that we're working on. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But to me, it's like you have to make yourself available to those that have criticisms in your community, and in addition to those that are supporting you. So that's one thing that I've always done from day one. Sometimes it's not pleasant, but that's, that's what we have to do. The other one is, you know, we let, you know, just kinda like the success that we're having, we let that speak for itself. It's kinda like, you know, yeah, you know, we're seeing growth, we're seeing the job numbers, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, the decisions that we're making are based on research, on data, and also on the leadership, the direction that the leadership has given us. And a lot of the times, a lot of what we're doing is for people that are not in the room with us or that are not, you know, that do not have a big voice. So we, we approach it that way. And then, and then the other one is, and we'll, we'll work on a series of editorials or maybe one editorial, not necessarily in response to, but just kinda like a little bit of exactly what we're doing. We're planning on doing this in December, before I got hurt, doing an Economic Development 101, just a little refresher. Here's what economic development, here's a definition of economic development, and here's what the definition for Kerrville is. So that's a three-part answer to your question.
Good, thank you.
Let me say a couple of things. I'm on the EDC Board, and I was thirty years ago. But I, I think it is so good where you're bringing in a commissioner from the Texas Workforce Commission to talk to our top twenty employers, because folks are struggling for workers. And for him to come in with some ideas, possibilities, and some resources, I think is great. But, you know, in regard to the letter that was in the paper recently, I did write a response and decided not to send it. But to me, we're looking at jobs for local people that are really good jobs, that pay well and have benefits. And like with Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, most of those jobs are for high school graduates. You know, you don't have to go to college, but if you wanna stay here and make good money, and they're already operating here. I've seen their operation, they're, they're producing, they're producing products right now, plane parts for Boeing, Lockheed, and the Department of Defense, including for Air Force One. And so, and related to that, you know, and the other thing I say about some, some of the businesses that have come in or will come in, it helps us with our property tax, because at one point, we had thirty percent commercial and seventy percent household. That's, that's not good.
Not healthy.
But just one other thing that the Entrepreneurial Center, I'm excited about. It is more than this, but it includes a business incubator. If you've got, if you've got a local person who's got a good idea for a business, how do you bring people around them, help them get the funds, launch, and everything else? And, and that's gonna be exciting to see what happens there.
And to your point, Mayor, you know, we talked about this at the board meeting yesterday, that, you know, Kildare's already, Kerrville is officially producing aerospace components. And that, I mean, as an economic developer nerd, that gets me super excited. So for the next forty, fifty years, you see a seven-four-seven, seven-three-seven, some of these, you know, jets, you know, like Boeing jets. And that's just one company. They've got, you know, different contracts. You know, we can say Kerrville put components into that, into that airplane. And, and that to me, again, is just, just super exciting.
We gotta move on to the Public Safety Complex, but I, I am excited. I wanna say one other thing here. The alignment, Tyvee High School now has a program related to aviation, and both in flying and in airport management. Ingram is gonna be building up their capabilities. Shriners doing a special aviation program, Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, and then Avionics. There's a, there's a cluster of things that are happening. To me, it's exciting.
Exciting times.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
All right, yep.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care of that knee. Okay, we have a Public Safety Bond Committee Report. And Mr. John Harrison will make that report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm gonna stall here a little, a little bit while one of our committee members comes in. Okay, we're in here now. I'm here representing the ten-member Public Safety Facility Bond Committee that you appointed on October the twenty-sixth. The members of the committee are Barb Doodle, Gary Cochran, Glenn Andrew here tonight, Jim Thomas, who's here tonight, Justin McDonald, Lane Gario is off in the corner, Senator Yarborough is over here, Steve Lehman, and then Tony Leonard. Senator Yarborough is over here, Steve Lehman, and then Tony Leonard. You task our committee to, one, evaluate the current state of the Police Department, Fire Administration, Municipal Court, and Emergency Management Facilities; and, two, determine whether the current facilities need to be replaced. And then, if so, what size of bond should be city seek to pass. We've accomplished our task. It's in the report that you received. I'm not going to go over that report just to tell you that we've accomplished it. We were unanimous in our support of a 10-0 in our support for a $45 million bond election to build a new public safety facility for Curville. In the charter we were given, the council did not mention information technology. But we do think it's wise to include the IT department in this new facility. The members of our committee here tonight are more than willing to answer any of your questions. And we'll get to that in a moment. Before we do, we couldn't have accomplished our task at all without a lot of support from city staff. And they include, but not limited to, Shelley McLaughlin, Keisha Francina, Charvy Torque, Isina Luna, Kim Meismer, Julie Behrens, Chief Chris McCall, Fire Chief Maloney, Mike Hayes, and EA Hoppe. And with that said, we would be more than happy to answer any of your questions that you may have about our recommendations.
Okay, I'm going to jump out with one. This was set up and appointed in October, and here we are in January in your reporting. I would like for this committee to stay in place for several more projects. We would like to be seen moved that quickly.
I will not speak for the committee, but thank you, no.
Questions, Council?
I have one.
Yes.
I'm looking at the numbers here. And you've got your total estimated costs. And the lower end of the range is $43,103,665. Is that based on a 10% contingency?
Probably, the the I will just say that at this point in time, in my experience judgment at forecasting this bigger project that far in the future with this much uncertainty, whether it's 10 or 15, we don't know. I mean, the estimators, the consultants that we use said that was a 10% number. I believe that's right. But I will tell you, based on my experience of doing big projects, and I've done a lot of big industrial projects, it's it's we don't know exactly what the number will be until we actually do the architectural work and engineering work, and you all buy a piece of property to build the facility.
Yeah, because I had been to a a few of the meetings. And I think the consultant had said that some of these other places were based on a 20% contingency. And what I want to be careful of is not coming in over budget. I want to be under budget. So would it make more sense to, I mean, the 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 higher range is 48 million, which I I believe if you do the math, might be 20% instead of 10?
Again, I I will leave that up to the judgment of Council and others. I would just say, in my my experience of building big projects, which I've done a lot over my, and that's not why I was put on this, but I've done a lot of big projects, is that you all decide what the number is, and then you go build the facility that you can with that number because you will not go over budget, as I understand it. You will you will build what you what you have the money to build with. And you will like to build the facility we we suggest, which is 69,000 square feet. But you'll you'll, whether that will be the the actual number that comes out after you actually do the architectural work and engineering at this point, I'll I'll defer to any of our team members that want to jump in here or EA that was in all the meetings too, not want to address it.
Well, let me just speak to the contingency. Okay. We did clarify that with the architect. Essentially, the on the tabulation that, you know, is in front of you there, the difference between column, basically, three and four, which are the construction costs only, and column five and six are total project costs. The total project cost, essentially, they put an escalator of about 28%. That 28% includes FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, includes design. In this regard, it included land costs were added into that. It also includes a contingency. There's two parts of the contingency. One is built into the construction at the 5%, and one is built into that total estimated project. So it's roughly 10% contingency. That is within this at these estimates in front of you.
Okay.
And and to speak to Chairman Harrison's comment, it's correct. I mean, ultimately, you know, if this is an item that the council decides to put before the voters and the voters approve it, that project will have to be within a budget that's allocated, right? And so ideally, 69,000 square foot facility would be accommodated within that. If you get to the point of construction bids and it's not at that point, then you've got to scale that project back in some ways, right?
Okay.
And I think there's a number of ways to do that. You know, we we value engineered projects all the time, once we get hard bids. We hope we don't, but we're in a very dynamic construction environment. You know, I will say that our consulting firm was very clear that, you know, these estimates are are, he feels pretty confident about these through the summer of '23. Beyond that, you know, it nobody would have thought two years ago, we're in the construction environment we're in right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carson?
I just want to thank all of you. I attended several, but not all of the meetings. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I think that you guys took this charge seriously. I appreciated the diversity of backgrounds that were represented on the committee. And and I want, you know, for EA for engaging the the architects so that we could get more of a concrete picture of what the needs were. And for all of, you know, our end users, so to speak, the people that would be occupying the space on a regular basis for your time and thoughtfulness and input into that as as well. So I I wanted, I first wanted to to share my my thanks. Then it was a unanimous vote, and I remember being at the meeting. And I understand that one of the members hasn't signed yet, but that's due to an illness. Is that correct? So we expect that to that document to be signed by the full.
We did reach out to that member, but again, there's been an illness the last couple of weeks, and so haven't been able to to do that. But we'll follow back up and then see.
So there's no indication that that the mind was changed?
Not the staff, yeah.
Well, I I applaud you all for finding a way to find common ground and and get us to a place where we can look at at a recommendation that's based on quite a bit of evidence, research, and hearing people getting together. That's all for me.
I too, thank you. I just really appreciate all of your time and effort, and this is not an easy task. And I think you've still got work ahead of you. I had a question. Was, and I did attend the meetings, is there much thought of members as far as is 50,000 a better number than 45? And
You mean 50 million?
50 million. I keep saying thousand, I mean million, yes. We probably wouldn't be here with this if it was 50,000. But is there any personal thoughts on on from anyone as to which number is best? We've got, we've got it broken down here for different taxes and such.
Let me say, there was a lot of discussion on that. I'm going to open it, but I will just say, it was sort of a consensus of 45, and we all supported the 45. But I do know that there was some concerns about, are we undershooting it? And I'll just let anybody that wants to, I mean, I'll let me jump in or chime in, Jim?
It's kind of like water will seek its own level. If we get $50,000, you'll spend $50,000.
Oh, 50 million?
You'll spend $50,000, you'll spend $60,000. So we've determined what is necessary and what is needed for the three offices that are going to be occupying that building. And that's the best figure we can come up with. Of course, if you give us more money, you'll
Get more things.
Yes, if you come to the mic, it'll help us.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I believe with the with the 69,000 square foot that we think that they need for these three or four occupants, the 45 million was the best guess with a 10% contingency. I think if Council's not satisfied with the 10% contingency, it'd be easy for you all to add to that number and easy to justify that you want more in the contingency. That's just, I mean, we're really dealing in COVID times when nobody knows what anything's going to cost tomorrow. I I think it was just, but we did work on it really hard and try to get a best. I I really think our best figure is the 69,000 square foot that they need to operate in for the next 15 years, 15 to 20 years. That's the hard rule, that's the hard number. So we're just chasing that other. So I, but I do agree with, you know, that if you think you need more contingency, I think that would be easy. I would support you adding more contingency. I don't think you necessarily have to spend it, but it is there if you need it.
Others, Lane or Steve want to speak, or Steve Lehman?
I concur with with Tony. We could, we could bump it up a little bit. The higher you make the number, the easier it's going to be to come in under budget. But we also have to get that number past the voters. So that's something to consider.
Thanks, Steve.
Senator Glenn, did you want to say? Lane? I mean, that's that's really up to you. That's, we've done our job, we're handing it over to you, so.
One other question. When I believe, and I'm, I need to try to remember, with, you've got the four cities that have just recently completed projects of this type. And we've got what the amount that ended up about per square foot, we are under that. Is is that a, is that, should that be a concern of ours? Or any any insight on that that might be helpful? The highest was, what, 578? And the lowest was 434? And it looks like, let's see, I'm not sure which.
If you go, if you go through some rationalizations, remember, we're building about 7,000 square feet of expansion space in our building, which is, it's it's basically empty rooms. And no, nothing in them, no furniture, no, you know, it's just empty space that we believe that we will build into over the next 15 years, very cheaply. But so that's that's a difference in our numbers to theirs.
Okay, so this, we don't necessarily know that they did, they put in dead space? Or what, I'm not sure what we're calling it.
Yeah, I I think the shell space is a piece that, you know, is a difference in between the estimates that we have in these other projects. I think the other piece is, you know, a number of these are really in metro areas. And so, you know, you get you get some differences there in construction just because of the nature of, you know, more competition versus rural areas. So I think that's some of the differences that you see. But I think the the committee, as well as the architects, felt that, you know, these estimates were within the ranges of what these other competitive, relatively near-term projects have been in the last couple of years.
And for and for me to add on to that, and this is just in my head, knowing that we're building, while I don't want to not build for the future, I think that's important and valid and valuable in this estimation. And and I and I think, and I am for doing that. To me, that's also in my mind, part of a contingency, right? So if things, we, if things get, if costs get, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we can cut back on if we have to, not that we want to, without sacrificing the current needs of first responders and and IT and and.
No. To me, the committee's done hard, hard work, good work, good report. The number of 45 million is already out there in the community to some extent. And I, my personal feeling is, if we come along and say, okay, yeah, but we want to bump it up to this. You can build more if we have a positive bond election campaign. What Stephen said about, you know, okay, you want something that the that the citizens will go for. And and then what Tony said, I think all of those together make me think, I think we ought to, we ought to go with it as it is. And I, that's not to cut off anybody's ideas on council about changing the number, but that's just where I'm coming from.
I want to start off my comments by thanking you, the Chair, the rest of the committee members for your time and effort, everything you did. You have a really good report, and I appreciate all the information that you put in here. I have a couple of questions. I want to clarify the contingency. So we got 10% total, 5% was towards the shell space, and then the other 5% was towards the materials for the construction and everything, or?
No, it's really
Probably 5% that was built into the construction estimates?
Right.
And then 5% that was part of that 28 escalator that gets you to the total project cost? Gotcha, okay. Does that make sense? It does, yes, thank you. So was I, am I mistaken? Whenever, at the last meeting, and I went to every meeting I could, I think I made all of them. The Randall Scott said that normally they give a 10% contingency on that construction element, but they gave 5% for our project. Is that right?
Yeah, and again, it's that a total of 10 kind of built into that two-pronged approach of the construction versus the total project. But again, this is kind of a range, right? You had the low-end range and and the high-end range. You know, and the committee kind of went in the middle at that 45.
Okay. I was just trying to, do we know why the the, because I wish I could have spoke at that meeting and asked why the contractor gave us a lower percentage on the contingency in that matter than with similar cities? Do we know anything about that?
I think it's just nature of different scopes of projects and, you know, a number of different factors, metro area versus, you know, other areas. And again, you know, we we asked really to give kind of a a range, right? Not just a hard and fast number.
Yeah. One thing I want to, another thing I want to touch on is to, that the committee is recommending that we add the IT department into it. So could you all elaborate on what thought went into that and why that may need to be necessary? I don't know if we have Charvy or anybody here to speak to that.
So the recommendation came back from EA and Charvy, the IT, because I believe 75%. And and you know, we we walked through
Did you all tour, did you all tour the IT facility?
I'm sorry.
Were you all able to tour the IT facility?
I didn't come to the supporting that, except by touring the Police Department. You go through the Police Department, everything's IT in this.
Yes.
Or everything should be IT, and it ain't today. I mean, it should be. Every room in that thing ought to be wired through the IT. Quite honestly, that's part of our, part of our reason we support building a new Police Department. It is not wired like it should be, a long ways. And that's why we need the IT department right on top of that, as we thought, and I'll.
Yep.
Yeah, we we really, they're spending over, well over 50% of their time with our public safety officials, and in addition to Municipal Court. Those are very tech-heavy operations. They're they're substandard in their existing facilities, but certainly, they're spending a lot of time there. You know, as as you all have rode along and ride-alongs and other things, you know, everything from our fire engines, certainly to our PD vehicles, they're basically mobile offices. And then now with body cameras and other things, it is very, very tech-heavy operations. And so, just given that, there's some natural efficiencies. You all tasked us with looking at synergies and efficiencies of departments. And so having those co-located, we wanted to at least explore that with the committee and see if there there were some legs there, and and they agreed that there did seem to be some efficiencies there.
Well, and they don't have great facilities now, the IT department.
That's correct.
Okay, one thing, Mr. Harrison. Chief Maloney was hoping he would get a corner office with windows. Can you guarantee that?
I'm not, I'm not gonna have anything to do with the design of the new building at all, period, end of statement, so.
We're actually gonna have both chiefs share a cubicle.
Chief share a cubicle, that's an idea. That way it increases communication.
Did the committee take public input at any of its meetings?
We, we invited it, and we had it, had one person speak at one meeting. Ask a question about whether or not we were taking into account.
Communications.
The updated, upgraded.
The infrastructure. Technology and whether that would be able to be transferred over.
Yeah, I will, I won't speak for everybody, but I, I, I know all my friends gave me a lot of input over the last month and a half about what we should or should not do.
It speaks volumes that your vote was unanimous, so that's really enough for me. Does your crystal ball say, when we take this to the public, we will be successful?
Well, as I, as I've told other people, I'm a very optimistic guy. And I, I think this makes such great sense. I know there's some of us, we're gonna get more of us involved going forward at trying to put together a strategy about how to sell this to the community, because I know the city cannot do that under state law. So there's some of us that are gonna get involved in doing that. More to come on that. So I'm optimistic. I, I think the, not the sad thing, but the reality of it is, we're gonna leave the police department and the municipal court and the fire administration in our existing facilities for another thirty months before we get anything done, at best. And we just need to realize, if you've ever been through the police department, it is not a good place. And if you, if you, the offices that Chief Maloney has out there and the, and the municipal courts, you know, there are thirty, another thirty months, so the pressure is on us, the citizens, us, the voters, to provide the facility to our first responders that we need to provide. Can we, can we make that sale? I, I don't know. Many of us are engaged to, to support doing that. And I think the team is gonna be, some of the team members, if not all, will be involved in that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, committee.
I have a couple more questions, just on the finance element. I think we're good there. Can we briefly speak to some of the information that was given to us on the impact on property tax and what that would look like to the voters?
Sure.
I'm just curious, I know the question is out there, are we gonna need to raise taxes or not? And if so, what are we looking at there?
Well, you have a spreadsheet in front of you that gives an impact by property value. So what we did was look at it at several different levels before, you know, we kind of landed where we landed. Worked with Hilltop Securities, who's our financial advisor, to kinda take a look at existing debt, what that debt would look like going forward. Of course, keep in mind, interest rates are kinda anybody's guess right now, so we're trying to be really conservative when we're looking at those interest rates. So, I mean, the bottom line is, yes, there's gonna be an impact to property tax. When you look at this, I broke it down in, I believe, fifty thousand dollar increments based on what property tax value is. Keeping in mind, the yellow highlighted line here is where the average property value is for the city of Kerrville, and that comes from Kirkad and from our most recent certified role. So, you know, on two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you're looking at about a hundred and eighty-eight dollars in increased, you know, property taxes for this on the INS side. So about fourteen dollars a month. I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I'm sorry, I was looking at the fifty million.
There you go, okay.
So, you know, lunch every month, give or take, if you wanna look at it that way. But I went ahead and did it in fifty thousand dollar increments so that those who had lower or higher property values could kinda see what the impact was there annually, and then also monthly. Just tried to break it out as, as, you know, specific as we could, keeping in mind, you know, if we get a lower interest rate, that number's gonna be lower. If we happen to get a higher interest rate, depending on, you know, how council lands on, on the limits there, then it could potentially be a little bit higher.
Again, just to reiterate that, 'cause I wanna, I wanna clarify, for the average homeowner, the average property owner in Kerrville, a hundred and sixty-nine dollars on an annual basis, fourteen dollars a month. Again, this has zero impact to anybody over sixty-five that has a property tax freeze, which for our community is almost thirty percent of the property owners in Kerrville. Zero impact.
This clearly takes that into account.
Correct. It does. It's used in our current values. So, and that, that number continues to grow every year, if you take a look at the frozen values that we've presented.
Okay. Another thing is, I was curious, so let's say we were to pass a bond election, the voters were to approve it. I was curious, how are we to borrow that money? I know we were talking, last year, we had, the max amount we could borrow was six point five. This year was ten maybe, or maybe that's at least what we projected for this project.
Correct.
How are we gonna do a forty-five million dollar bond on debt on the city? How does that work?
Well, it, I mean, it'll be negotiated sale, so there, you know, there will be an investor somewhere that, that, you know, we virtually sell that debt to at an agreed-upon interest rate. And that will be coordinated through our Hilltop Securities, and then, of course, our bond attorneys.
With our capacity that we have, that's the self-imposed debt limits that we've set for ourselves with that capacity. So the vote to issue a bond is going to create
That's correct.
An increase in our, in our sales tax.
That's correct.
That we couldn't do, that we wouldn't be able to do with our own self-imposed debt limits.
That's correct. To go over that limit, we have to go to election. So that will, i, if it should pass, that will give us permission to exceed our current debt limit.
And last thing, and not really anything financial, but really appreciate that information. Thank you. But more on the strategic side of putting the ballot together, Council. And I guess staff can help with this too, but I was wondering, is it possible to do a ranked choice on the ballot? For example, giving, if we wanted to give the forty-five million dollar as a choice A, and then if Council wanted to go higher or lower and propose a choice B, and see whether the city, give the, an opportunity to vote for and against each choice? Because what I'm looking at is, if we, and I'm sure, I think the community is all wanting this to move forward, if we were to lose, or if not we were to lose, if we were to lose a chance and the voters were to turn down the forty-five million dollars, we're back to square one, and now we have to figure out what we're gonna do there. But if we give them a choice, maybe they're more inclined to say, okay, I prefer this choice over the, the other, or I can see the forty-five over a fifty, whatever we, we decide to do. But I was just thinking, if maybe we could think about doing something like that. I don't know what anybody thinks about that.
You know, I, it wouldn't be the council, I don't think, but the, Mr. Harrison and the members of the committee, whatever, that choose to work on the bond election, would be in touch with a consultant along the way about these, how these kind of elections work, and that be posed as, as a possibility. You know, where has that worked? Where did it not work? That kinda thing. But I, I mean, I think, yeah, I think it's an option that could be considered.
Mayor, we could explore that with our bond counsel. I have not seen that before on bond elections, but we could certainly ask that question of our bond counsel and see what the legalities of that are.
I think, I feel, we would be more successful if we just had a number that we were all in agreement with. And we present that as, as one. I think options might get a little, a little difficult to work with, so.
Okay.
It's personally.
Sure. No, I was just putting that idea out, just random thought about that.
Okay. At five fifty-eight fifty-five, we are adjourned for this workshop.